Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen, welcome. Dawson County Board of Commissioners work session today is Thursday, July the 3rd, 2025. Appreciate all those that are with us in attendance as well as those that are with us online. We'll get right into the new business. First up, we have a presentation of requests to reclassify an existing District Attorney Office Administrative Clerk position, District Attorney Lee Dara.
And good afternoon, everybody, and I hope everybody has a pleasant Fourth of July weekend. Looks like it's gonna be a good one. There is a legal administrative assistant is what I'm asking you to reclassify Valerie Edmondson as within our office. Her current title is Administrative Clerk. But her duties are much more than that classification. She helps prepare subpoenas, discovery, she manages case files and court calendars. And this would realign her with Dawson County's current maximum minimum pay for pay grade 11. She's presently at pay grade 5, but she already exceeds the maximum pay for pay grade 5. Now, this won't be involving immediate costs because we had budget savings when one of our assistant district attorneys left and went to Chatham County, be with his family and to prosecute down there. So his position was open for three or four months at least. So there is sufficient money in our budget to cover during this budget year. It's, in fact, her current pay is $22.23 an hour. She would receive a 5% for grade adjustment totaling $23.34, which is at 48.547 annually. So it's a matter of not much an hour, really, and is very much reflective of what she already makes, or close to what she already makes. She would be receiving some benefit from this. But we, all of our, the people in our office basically who do the administrative type of work have very heavy loads of work to do. They're not just sort of secretaries, I guess you would call. Some people would. So we're just asking for the reclassification for Valerie Edmondson to Legal Administrative Assistant, Pay Grade 11.
Questions for Lee?
So this year it's within your budget. What is the budget impact for next year's annual? What's that, what's that total?
Well, her salary would be next year on annual, 48.547.
And her current year is 37.4, is that right?
That's, that's the minimum in current year, is it not? What is?
Yeah, it says base is that. And what is she, so what's her annual salary currently?
She's making 22.23 an hour.
22.20?
And it would go to 23.34. So she's already in the 40s.
It's at 46.238.40 is her current dollar. We're talking about $2,000 right now.
And obviously that would be in your budget request to continue that, that would be.
Correct, it would be to leave her at that Legal Administrative Assistant position.
Other questions for Lee? Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much.
Next up, we have a presentation of right-of-way maintenance agreement between Georgia Department of Transportation and Dawson County Public Works Director, Robert Drury. Robert?
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. All right. Sound like I'm echoing, is that?
That's good.
Better? Okay. The county, like many other counties in the state of Georgia, do not provide routine maintenance on state routes. We all kind of know that. And I think we all can pretty much agree that we're not necessarily pleased with the DOT's maintenance efforts on state routes. So from time to time, the counties want to be on the state routes. Well, the DOT has created a partnership through a right-of-way maintenance agreement that allows local governments to do some non-routine, non-recurring maintenance on, within state routes, for the most part, to waive their liability should something happen to that crew while they're on a state route. The county approached the DOT late last year with the idea of providing some limited, non-recurring maintenance on State Route 400. And we were going to do that through that general services agreement with a, with a local agency for the Labor Service. And that Labor Service has not come to fruition, but staff wants to continue to proceed with a maintenance agreement with the DOT. We have a draft maintenance agreement. It's in your package. It's their standard format that they use. The county attorneys reviewed the agreement and agreed it's just a standard form for the DOT. And there's provisions in there for the maintenance plan and what we can and cannot do. They don't want routine maintenance. They don't want not, not recurring maintenance. They want to keep it as simple as possible. We don't even have to let them know when they're out there. We just can go do what we need to do. So from time to time, there may be a need. We do need to get on a state route. So we want to go ahead and pursue this, this maintenance agreement for future needs in case we get to that point. Now, I must say that I really don't have the forces, the labor forces, to do any real work with any state route. But, you know, the time may come. It might change in the future, particularly if we do get another opportunity for a Labor Services Agreement. So that stands before you. We ask the board to consider the maintenance agreement with Georgia DOT.
Questions for Robert?
Oh, questions so much is the, I had a conversation recently with Steve Gooch, our Senator, and asked him about the mowing schedule for 400, the intersection there at 453. If my 12-year-old walked out through there, I think we would lose him because it's over his head. And his feedback was the state pays for that three times a year at a cost of $10 million per mow. And of course, that's across the state. I think there's, there's validity in spending some dollars to keep that area looking good. That's one of our economic engines of the community. At one point, I asked for forgiveness. I went out there with a bush hog and a tractor myself and mowed that thing. But I think it's something that we definitely need to be cognizant about of just the appearance of our community, and that's the gateway to our community and trying to do what we can to keep that at least mowed six times a year instead of three times a year by what the state does.
Agreed.
Other questions? Okay, thanks, Robert. All right. Next up, we have a presentation of requests to add intersection improvements to Jewell-Slaton Road and AT Moore Road on State Route 9 South to Transportation, special purpose local option sales tax tax program. And Robert, you got that?
I do. The T-Spots Resolution allocated funds, it was a line item allocation for roadway safety and other improvements. And this line item was created just in the event during the life of the T-Spots that an improvement came in front of staff primarily for safety purposes. It could qualify as a T-Spots project. Until no, until now, there's been no projects identified out of that line item. So I'm coming in front of the board, asking for consideration to add those two intersections, Jewell-Slaton and AT Moore, to the T-Spots Program. And funding would come from this line item of roadway safety and other improvements. I think we all know those intersections quite well, AT Moore and Jewell-Slaton. Jewell-Slaton comes in at a very acute angle. It's quite obvious that we want to realign that intersection to more 90 degrees. AT Moore is a little bit more complicated because, as you also well know, DOT has got a contractor for building a roundabout at the intersection of Bannister. So AT Moore is a little bit more of a challenge because we want to make sure it works with the roundabout, but still provides, you know, better sight distances pulling the intersection, maybe some better traffic movements, diesel lanes, maybe even a right turn lane. At this point, we don't know. So we're asking for some funds to get us to the point where we can do some survey work, come up with a general plan, maybe a scope. And, and I do intend to talk to DOT and see if we can get some partnership with them once we know what we can or should be doing on those intersections. So I'm asking for the board to consider adding those two intersections to the T-Spots Program.
Questions for Robert? Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much for your time.
Next up, we have a presentation of FY 2025 Legacy Link Contract Addendum Number Three, Senior Services Director Dawn Johnson. Ms. Dawn?
Good afternoon, Chairman and Board of Commissioners. This hopefully is the last one because we ended and started over July the 1st. We'll be able to use these funds when we calculate, when we finish this, the end of this month. So this is an extra $4,724, and we will use this for the meals that it shows that's listed for, 934 meals on home delivery that the county will not have to pay for.
Awesome.
So we'll be able to use it for that whole month.
Questions for Dawn? As long as you bring those, I don't care if you come back again.
I'm locked in every time. I mean, this was the third one. I think at one time we've had four come in one year. So things are changing. But yes, sir. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. All right. Next up, we have a presentation of RFP 478-25 Program Management Services Public Health Facility County Manager Joey Leverett and Purchasing Manager Melissa Hopp. Melissa, it looks like you're gonna do that. Okay?
Yes, sir. As soon as I can get this turned on. There we go. This is for the public health, as you stated, and we know that this particular project is included in the Spots 7 Resolution. The county applied for $1 million grant for this project through the Georgia Department of Community Affairs. That was in April of this year. And in more than likely, I believe it was around March of this year, prior to even putting in our application, we applied to get a pre-award cost approval from them so that we could go ahead and bid before the award for the grant came out and actually begin our project. As long as we followed all the federal, state, and our rules and regulations that we would still be eligible for that $1 million when it comes hopefully to us in October this year. So with that being said, we followed all of our county rules as well as the state and the federal when we put this bid out, all the HUD information that has to go in there for Section 3 and all that sort of thing, Title 6, all that. We received three proposals. The evaluation team was made up of our county manager, Joey Leverett, the facilities director, Randy Patrick, and our public works director, Robert Drury. This is just some of the scope of work for this program management. They're going to attend the pre-renovation conference. Part of their original scope was to also be part of the bid itself for the renovation construction. But with this being the timing that it was, obviously that first part's going to not be part of their award. Work with the county staff for administration of the project. Work with the county staff for approving construction pay applications, coordinating submittals for the construction, and keeping the renovations contractor on schedule and ensure drawings are followed. We'll also coordinate inspections and at the end and do end of construction procedures. As you see here, Ascension Program Management had an offered price of $59,800, and then Gerard Developments was a slightly lower. But when you took out that first part of Task 1, we now have APM at $51,400, and Gerard Development was at $46,500. That's only a difference of $4,900. And as you see here, APM's total score is 88 with the technical 70, which was well above Gerard Development. Staff respectfully request the board to accept proposals received, award a contract to Ascension Program Management in the amount of $51,400 utilizing Spots 7 funds.
Questions for Melissa?
Can you go back to the chart and explain where you got the $51,400 from?
Mm-hmm, I sure can. So it's not broken down there, but there's a Task 1A and 1B. The Task 1A was to help develop the actual scope of services in the actual reconstruction project as well as review those proposals. And then Task 2 was to actually just attend a pre-conference and start picking up work at that time. And so that's why there was such a difference between Task 1 price, which changed the total price at the end. Obviously, we're not going to do Task 1A because I'm with you tonight to present for the actual repurposed renovation construction.
I'm following. That 48.600 just did not look like the 51.4, so.
Other questions? All right, thank you, ma'am.
And I think I understand what you're saying, Seth. You can't subtract all of Title 20.
Correct, that's correct. Yeah.
Right, right.
Because it was A and B, and so the, it just shows the total.
For each, that's right.
Phase 1. And so you were saying 51.4, and then you're asking for us to approve 51.4, and I was like, well, that's just 48.6, so.
Definitely.
If we can make that adjustment before we vote, just so it'll be planked for the public?
Definitely.
Thanks.
Got y'all see that broken out more?
Yeah, let's make that adjustment so it adds up easier for the public to see as well.
Definitely.
All right. So next up, we have a presentation of RFP 479-25 Repurpose Renovations Public Health Facilities. You gonna do that one too? Okay.
Here we go. And so with this one, because it is a public health, all of Slide 1 is going to be the exact same thing that you just heard from the program management side. We also received three proposals for this one as well. Our evaluation team varied just a little bit. That was county manager Joey Leverett, facilities director Randy Patrick, and our building inspections manager Keith Wilson also evaluated. So this work is going to be for the demolition of the interior, which is going to be roughly around 10,000 square feet, and the structural modification to support the operable partitions, painting of the exterior, mechanical plumbing, fire alarm, and fire sprinkler system, low voltage, which includes cabling, access control, and paging system. So this one's going to be just a little bit different than anything we've seen before because with this particular bid, because the public health side of this building that we have is going to be part of the, the community development grant and has to follow all their Davis Bacon and wages and all that sort of thing. We're only going, only allowed to do under this particular contract at this time just that side you see over in the blue.
Yep.
But anything that's going to cause the side on the blue not to work, then the whole building will be affected, such as HVAC, plumbing, that sort of thing. Obviously, you can't run plumbing for one side and it stop. So it's whatever is going to affect both sides will be done within this particular bid. We do hope that if it looks good with what their change order pricing is going to be, that we might be able to come back to you to have this same contractor finish the other side. But they just could not do it within this bid. There'd be no way to separate the workers because the right side won't have to have Davis Bacon and follow all the CDBG rules, nor will the particular construction materials. Right now, on the left side, construction materials are going to have to be Build America, Buy America, which means from the second they thought about it to the second it goes on to our building, it all has to be done within United States. That's something that they just started and made mandatory for our particular bid. But luckily, on that particular note, there is a waiver that we can get all the way through November 27, so that'll still be within our project, that if it shows our pricing is way out of whack because of this, we can ask for a waiver for that. So once we have this award and we get to sit down more with the price proposal, we may be able to work on pricing and it may come down. So we'll see how that goes. But right now, this is where it stands, what I show you next. On this one, PNCOR gave us our best price of $1,787,353. And their total score is a score of 89. So Task Staff respectfully request the board to accept proposals received, award a contract to PNCOR in the amount of $1,787,353 with a 10% county controlled contingency utilizing Spots 7 funds.
Questions for Melissa?
So this number is just for the blue side?
Just for the blue side.
So when will we have the numbers for the other side?
After this project is just about finished, because you have to have the contract open to be able to do a change order on it. And we could go ahead and start working on pricing for the change order, but we can't do any work until this blue side is finished, according to what HUD and Georgia Department of Community Affairs tells us.
So we can't build the other side as a separate contract?
We can, but we're going to hope that we come to you with a change order.
But, but I guess my question is, is if we would bid that as a separate project, one of these other ones may be more aggressive because they don't have to comply with the other constraints of what the blue side is, so.
Right. And that's why we're doing, that's why we're doing this separately like this one because we have to with the pricing. It would be an administrative nightmare to try to keep the electrical pricing over here separate from then what you're actually paying an electrical contractor over on the pink and red side, I think it was. So there's no way to do that. But when we get to come back to PNCOR to do that change order, he will be able to give us regular construction pricing with no federal rules and laws that has to apply to a CDBG grant.
But we won't necessarily be locked in them because he knows he's kind of got us at that point because he's already.
Well, he has no idea this is happening. This is just something we're discussing. Well, I'm, what I'm trying to say is, it's not locked in. Is we're going to see what the change order pricing would be versus what if we would get pricing somewhere else.
And a lot of it too is also dependent on us getting the grants. Because it all goes away if we don't get the grant. We don't have to follow any of that stuff.
That's exactly right, which we hope we do, so.
Yeah, we hope we get the grant, but if we didn't.
In October, so we'll see how that goes.
We wouldn't have to follow any of those rules and regulations.
Exactly. But this contract has nothing to do with a change order. That was just a conversation that we were, Joey and I wanted to make you aware of, that we possibly may come to that and we may bid it out. It just all depends on what PNCOR comes back as.
Do you think that the federal government, state government regulations is driving this number up by?
Absolutely.
50%? What percentage?
That percentage, there's no telling. I mean, we really just can't tell that because we don't have apples to apples on it.
So if we bid it without that grant, just assuming we don't get the grant, and it came in at $700,000, then it'd be better not to take the $1 million.
Right.
It won't come in at $700,000.
I seriously doubt that, but.
And there won't be that great of a difference, not a million dollars difference.
I wouldn't imagine it's going to be a million dollars by no means.
If anything, $200,000, $300,000, if that.
It's almost like, why did I wear white today? I mean, we just can't know until we actually see some pricing out there. But with us already paying leasing on this, that's why we are trying to go ahead and get some work done so people can start moving in instead of us paying lease on it and it not being utilized.
I agree with that. But we're talking big numbers. I mean, a lease payment for a month or two, well, we're doing our due diligence properly to make sure we're getting the best value is long-term a better use of taxpayer dollars than just moving forward because we got a month's worth of payment.
So we're at what, July 3rd, and we'll know about the grant in October?
That's correct. Construction on this wouldn't even start till at least mid-August or September just because of coming through with you and getting the contract awarded and then actually having the pre-construction meeting and getting schedules going and that sort of thing. So basically, there won't be any work done on this building for quite a while so that if we didn't get it, we could always negotiate that price out. But you can see with the pricing that they're much better than the other two with this. So I'm sure they'd be much better than the other two without it.
Is there any way we can get that put in the contract?
What's that?
Where we're nego, making sure we're getting that negotiating price if we are not granted the, the award?
Sure.
Okay.
I would imagine just would be a separate term in the clause.
Put in the contract where we're renegotiating this price if we don't. if we don't have to do all this federal and state stuff with the contract. So I think we can put that in there.
But you see the big difference between the three companies that we did get pricing for?
Yeah.
And they're much better than what we had with the other two?
Yeah, okay. Maybe we just keep an eye on that and we work on that, see, make sure we have that in the contract.
Do you have any idea what the change order is going to cost us? I mean, is it going to be another million?
We have no idea. And I would absolutely not do it if it was even over, well, I hate, I don't want to put a number out there because then he's going to hear it, like you said. But we have an idea in our mind what we think this should cost, and that's nowhere near it.
Because like you said, a lot of this stuff's got to be done regardless, which is in this contract, electrical, plumbing, HP, all the high dollar, big dollar stuff.
Right.
Because basically, the rest of it is reconfiguration of the room.
Exactly, and then our low voltage.
Yep.
That's another caveat to this is that with the public health, it has to be everything that the state would use because that's a state agency, actually.
Yep.
So all of their hardware, software, that sort of thing will be put in for them under this contract. But on the other side, any type of low voltage and that sort of thing will be done by our IT guys, not performed by them, but put the scope out.
Okay. Other questions?
How tough is it to bid out the whole thing without the, the whole building without the federal state regulations?
It would be another forty-five to sixty days. And that's just because Public Works makes you have so many weeks and days in between doing each step of that bid, that that's just what it ends up being.
Okay.
And when I say the state, I mean the actual law towards public works for local and municipality, nothing with the grant.
Yeah. Other questions? Thank you, ma'am. All right, next up, we have presentation of request for Project Management Services contract approval for Fire Station Three and Fueling Center Project. County manager Joey Leverett, you gonna handle that one?
Yes, sir, thank you. This is, most of you are familiar. We're currently grading Harmony Church and Nick's Bridge. That's a grading contract for replacement of Fire Station Number Three. It's also, that project is going to include a fueling center. That work, the actual building and fueling center is currently out for bid. I think the bid's open later in July. It's getting ready for this process. We would desire to contract with a program management firm. We've talked to several folks. Gerard Development is the company we would like to hire. They've offered us a proposal to help us with bid evaluations, with the pre-construction design, and of course, the construction management itself. They've offered us a scope of work for seventy-five thousand dollars to perform those services. This is about a thirteen-month project. And we are asking for a professional exemption to approve this work for Gerard Development.
Questions for Joey?
Okay, thank you, sir.
Next up, we have presentation of FY 2026 Intergovernmental Agreement between the Board of Education and Dawson County Concerning School Resource Officers. Ms. Davis?
Yes, good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. This is the School Resource Officers Agreement. It's exactly the same as ones that have been approved in past years. It's gone through the sheriff's office. They've requested approval with no changes except for updating the dates. The school board, I understand, has already approved it at their June meeting. So it's just before you for consideration at this time. It has an effective date of July first. I have not been told necessarily whether we need to move it forward. And I'm thinking since we're in the summertime and there's not a lot of activity with the school resources officers, it could be on the next agenda. But I did want to raise that, that it has an effective date of July one.
Okay. Questions for Ms. Davis?
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Next up, we have presentation Board Department, Long Range Planning Committee. Shannon, Shannon Stanford, replacing Jim Brayley. Resume is in your packet for your, to look at. And so that's, make that recommendation to you for that Long Range Planning Committee. All right, county manager report, Joey.
Thank you again, sir. I do have a few items. Your flash report for the month of May, as well as a list of agreements and contracts is in your packet. That flash report does include the new T-Splot dashboards that you're updated quarterly. That's a new addition to that report. Briefly, I just wanted to say two thank yous. On June the seventh, most of you recall, we had a wind event, a windstorm throughout our county that evening in the War Hill area and several other, the Grizzle Road area and several other areas in our county. Lot of power outages. Really want to say thank you to our Public Works Department as well as our emergency management and fire and EMS folks. It was a busy night for them, and luckily, we had no injuries from that storm. But just wanted to say thank you to all those groups for their work. A second thank you, one that was worth a second thank you because we've said thank you a lot of times for everybody who worked on the Styles Park project, which we had our grand opening on June the seventeenth, wonderful event. I appreciate the local news covering that for us and also putting it on our website. It was a great event. Just wanted to publicly one last time say thank you to many, many people that were involved in helping that project be completed. It was a great event that day. Still got a few little finishing touches to put some trail signs up and whatnot have you, but we're almost there. A reminder that our county offices will be closed as we celebrate our Birth of Our Nation, July fourth tomorrow. And Mr. Chairman, I do have a need for an executive session for potential litigation tonight. That's all I have, thank you.
County attorney report, Ms. Davis?
I do not have a public report tonight, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. All right, that takes us through our work session. Yeah, we can, what you, what you want to do?
I was just looking at it and thinking number four, maybe, the Legacy Link Contract, since it's non, non-cost-bearing, and then the nine, yeah, for the consent agenda.
Okay. Four and nine for the consent agenda, y'all good with that? All right. All right. With that, we'll take about a ten-minute break. We'll be back for the work session. Thank you for your attendance.